This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, welcome everybody. Today is August 11th at 6:00 PM. This is the City Council East Hampton Public Safety Committee. Present, I see our councillor Derby, councillor Munier, and myself, and we're also joined by City Council President Omar Gomez. Welcome. First item of business, since we did have the restructuring of the committee, we lost councillor Riley and added councillor Munier. We, I asked to do a committee reorganization just to make sure that everyone's still satisfied with the roles or wants to recommend new roles. So, is there any input there at all? Does anyone want to offer any nominations for chair? Well, you need to nominate a new chair.
Oh, we have to nominate?
Well, I just want to make sure.
Because I don't think we have to.
Okay, you're satisfied with the current chair?
As long as we get a new secretary, we're good.
Yeah, oh, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing that you have to do is nominate a new secretary.
Okay, as long as you guys, I mean, the reorg is on there, so you're satisfied with the current chair, I just wanted to...
I think that's fine.
Okay, then, I'll take a nomination then, or I would like to actually nominate councillor Munier as our new clerk.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion for me and a second for councillor Derby. Are there any comments or questions about that? You're okay with that nomination? Okay, then, I'll just take a, I'll take a vote. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, motion passes.
I was expecting you to say no.
Okay, moving on, approval of minutes from last, from past meetings. I greatly appreciate councillor Munier stepping in in an unofficial role. Now it's official, though, as clerk for the 7/12/22 meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the 7/12/22 meeting.
Good, thank you, I'll second that. So, we have a motion for councillor Derby, a second for me. Any questions or comments? I'm just going to say thank you so much. These look great for someone who's never done minutes before. So, you know, always happy to be a resource if there's ever any questions. And we talk a little bit between the meeting. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, three nothing in, to approve minutes, motion councillor Derby, I seconded that. Okay, moving on. Public speak time. So, let me just, I just want to talk about what's on our agenda. So, in a particular order, we have the DPW quarterly report. I see director Nellman's here. There's the fuel storage amendment for 228 North Hampton Street, River Valley Co-op. I believe that the vendor for the electric speed signs is going to be here. And then there's ongoing business with the safety of Southern Main Street sidewalk and the four-way traffic lights, where the ordinance review committee final report. So, that's what's on our agenda. Is there anyone here from the public who'd like to speak to an item not on our agenda? Seeing none, we can move on. So, as long as the committee agreed, I spoke with Mr. Evan Lash is here, representing River Valley Co-op, regarding the fuel storage, and it's, I don't think this will be a lengthy item, so I told him that we can discuss that first unless there's an objection from the committee. So, there's a request to amend River Valley Co-op, which sits on top of the old Fedor property, to amend their fuel storage license to add 5,000 gallon above-ground liquid propane capacity, whereas before they had a previous license for below-ground 6,000 gallon gas tanks. So, those have obviously, those are gone. Mark? Come on in. No, no problem, have a seat. So, those were removed in 2011. I was told there's currently a 5,000 gallon propane tank on the property. 2,000, I'm sorry. And, again, they're requesting to add another 2,000 gallon tank, but we've to, we've up to 5,000 gallon total capacity for various events, or Captain Jack's wanted to expand or add propane. So, any questions or comments from the councillors at all? And then, any questions from the other folks here about that item before I have Mr. Lash speak? So, Mr. Lash, if you'd like, just to comment a little about this.
Yeah, we currently have a 2,000 gallon tank. We want propane, sort of through our quest, to eventually be a net zero building. But, we're noticing in the wintertime, especially in January and February, we get, majority of our business in terms of deliveries and cooking happens between 5:00 and 9:00 o'clock in the morning, and the temperatures at those times are prohibiting the evaporation of the liquid propane in the single 2,000 gallon tanks. So, through the advisement of Mike George, who is our propane supplier, and Captain Constantine, they advise me to seek out another 2,000 gallon tank.
Okay, and you indicated that Captain Constantine had already come out and performed some sort of site...
Yeah, he's the one actually that gave me the old, the old land license, and has been instructing me on how to go, you know, go about amending the license.
Okay, and as everyone knows, we have a application for 5,000 gallon above-ground liquid propane storage signed by Chief Norris in the packet. So, I can circle back with Captain Constantine just to check in and find out if there's any other details we need to know. This doesn't sound very complicated to me. Does any of the other members of the committee have any questions or concerns?
I would just say that we've worked with Captain Constantine on this previously, and he, this is an area of his expertise. So, I imagine if there was, you know, if there was any outstanding things that were related to this, he would probably be here. But, I think checking in with him is fine, but, you know, I have full faith in his recommendation.
Great.
Well said. We are installing bollards on both sides where the tank's going to go. It's going to be directly next to where the previous tank is, well, three and a half feet away from, but next to the other, the other tank.
Okay, great. Councillor Munier, anything? And then, the, are there councillor, any comments? And the director of DPW, do you have any concerns about that at all?
Mike George and Dan Constantine involved, the two people that you want involved in that project.
Okay, perfect. Okay, well then, so there's a public hearing set for September 7th on this item. I'll, I'm happy to entertain a motion to approve this.
So, moved.
We have a, we have a motion to approve, a second, we have a second. Motion from councillor Derby, second from councillor Munier, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in opposed? Motion passes, three nothing on motion from councillor Derby and second from councillor Munier. All right, thank you. And you said I could keep this term?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks for making the time to come.
Yeah, yeah.
And thanks for all you do up at the Co-op.
Thank you.
All right, turning our attention to our next item, we have Mark's, wow, how did know? Mark Gregory, right?
That's correct.
All right, so, Mr. Gregory is here. We've corresponded a few times via email. I think I've shared most or all of that correspondence with the committee. We have a discussion about use of electric speed monitoring signs in the city, and I had reached out to a few vendors, and Mr. Gregory had responded. So, we're, he's here to kind of present a little bit about what he has to offer the city, and also fortunately, we have the director of DPW here, who, that's generally his purview. Before I open it up to Mr. Gregory, do the councillors have comments? Okay, so, take it away.
All right, well, thank you for inviting me here today. I saw one of your signs coming in, actually. Yeah, so just quickly about, you know, this is all we do is traffic calling, you know, speed control from, you know, rubber devices, in-road rubber devices, speed signs, speed cameras, we're getting down to another month or so, we're going to have an actual turning, turning movement count, piece of equipment for doing stuff like that. So, everything we have is interconnected, can go on the cloud, we have data collectors as well. So, so we do a lot, and it's all, I'm a professional engineer, traffic engineer. I don't work in a capacity here, but I did that for a long time. I've been with this company over 12 years, a lot of experience just in this. It's all I've ever done is traffic. So, a lot of times what I do is just come here and try and say, listen, tell me what you're experiencing, because it's, you have to be careful. I'm more about the backend of the sale than the beginning, because it's really important to buy the right thing. Just because, just find something, there's a lot of liability. There's a lot of liability not doing something if you know there's a speeding issue, as well as doing something, you know. And I want to put you guys in the best position, just from a market standpoint. That does nothing to do with what I sell. Whether you buy it from us or not is, does not matter. It's really, you make a trade, you make a change. So, and everything's, I'm sure you have a variety of situations that may differ in town, you know. Mix is complex, it's type of streets and collectors and, you know, cut-throughs, I'm sure, and all that. And everyone probably, you know, all these different things have, there's a difference in solutions. So, and we could probably calculate most of them. Can I ask the question, is there one thing in particular that is like the, you know, comes up, it's Allen Street, Main Street, near the school? You know, there's always one thing that's worth a pedestrian crossing, or is there anything that you're trying to address? Or is it kind of a, you know, you're looking at ideas throughout town? Is that, is that the sound of it?
Councillors, any kind of thoughts?
I would say, like, the place where we would probably start is just the fact that, on a lot of our residential streets, we've seen an uptick of speeding, as you're probably aware. Since COVID, there's been a significant uptick of traffic accidents, pedestrian accidents. You know, we just had pedestrian accident on Route 10 a couple of days ago. And so, I think the sentiment within the city is trying to make people aware of how fast they're going, and having potentially some feedback that can help them adjust and modify that behavior, without necessarily having to be pulled over every, you know, having police pull people over every five minutes. You know, just like raising awareness and creating a extra layer of safety on the streets.
Yeah, that would add to that. We now have a traffic enforcement officer, and I think the cloud technology might be helpful in order to really, truly, you know, people say, well, people are speeding all the time, right? But then we actually get some of the download, because some of the mobile units we have, you know, you can download data, and you find out, well, it's not as bad as it looks. This would actually help us both, A, use feedback technology to get people to slow down, and we shared some of the statistics around, that that does seem to work. As well as then having our law enforcement, you know, be able to actually focus on the areas where there really is speeding too, in terms of details. Director, you have any thoughts?
No, I think you're right on. I mean, it's great to have the signs while I'll be able to log in and really verify that there's an issue before we're pulling city resources to it, or what we need to be.
And then we have our president of our city council and former chair here, do you have anything to add?
I think you guys covered everything, especially what councillor Derby was saying. And you, when we have data coming from the police department, and definitely we have an issue in our community with the coast walks. Some people speeding, but when we get the data, show that it's, it's not that bad. We have it, but it's not that bad. I think most of that is just perception. People, the thing it is, is using your data, but I think the controllers and director of DPW covering most of that stuff.
Yeah, perception's a big thing, and all of our, we have over 16 different signs. I'll just kind of slide this down. You guys can kind of look at it and move along if you want. But, we have over 16 different signs. They all can collect data. They all can be, you know, put on the cloud or not. The cloud is, you know, for our revolution signs, they're free the first year. And, you know, that service, and then every year after that, it's a paid service. Say, you know, worst case scenario, say $500 a sign. The more you buy, the more usage you buy, the less damage you get. But, the benefit of that is, is gives you a little more robust software. The signs come with a built-in, what's called the Bluetooth, the wireless, right, the old way. It's, it actually isn't now, ironically, but it's the old way to do things. But, so you can still, if you choose to, say you buy a sign or whatever, and then, and you're not using it, or you like it and you can't afford it in the second year, and so you say, you know what, this year we're going to pass on it. Then the third year comes along, hey, we've got some funding, Safelife's a school, or whatever it is. And you can, once the sign has it, then you can turn it on, turn off like a light switch. You say, okay, here's the money, and we'll turn it on and use it. So, recommend, you know, that consider, when you're considering options, to at least get it outfitted that way. You could always retrofit it, an oversight up to that if you want to. It's just a little more, it's costly, and, and, I'll keep shuffling these along. There's a lot, there's a lot here. But, so, yeah, so, TCD says that for local roads, the digit size, which is just the LED portion, should be 12 inches for a local road. And that's important. God forbid there's an accident. The first thing like a guy like me that hires is going to go out and go measure it, right? Because that's part of the legal case of defending something, right? So, and it's not a big deal, because like our 11-inch, the difference between our 11-inch and 12-inch is basically 100 hours. 11-inch, you know, the smaller signs are really for factory settings, auto primer settings, and they're perfectly fine for that. It's just, I like, you know, I like to have you guys be on the right side of the law if something, something should happen. They'll work anywhere, the 12-inch is great. It'll work in any setting you probably have. Where it gets harder to read, and as you can imagine, say on the outskirts of town, if someone's coming at a sign, you're having issues where guys are going 50, 55, 60, now you got a 12-inch sign, they really can't see it till we're on top of it. Then you should consider larger signs.
15.
15-inch, that's the digit size. The sign itself is a full-size, 30 by 30, you know, like a street sign. But that you'll see, the whole thing with traffic calling is that it's, you perceive the object, whether it's a speed bump, a camera, or whatever, well in advance of the event, so you slow down gradually over a longer period of time. A lot of companies sell smaller signs, and the issue with that is, you know, you speed up, you can't really tell what it is. Tap the brakes, keep going. You haven't done anything, but it's a lot of money, right? And the other thing is, you created, now you've created a distraction, right? You don't want to do that. You want to make sure it's comfortable. So, in general, these signs, you're probably going to spend roughly, they start at roughly around $3,000 for the sign, two-year warranty, free training, free software upgrades, free Bluetooth, of course, for all that for the life of the sign, free data collection reporting for the life of the sign. If you go to the 15-inch, it's probably another $300, $400, you know. And then, then the more LEDs, like the more messaging you get, or fancier you get of a better sign, it just, you know, it's a little more, more expensive. We do have data collectors. So, it's just like a sign. You just hang it, it's a little box.
That's cool.
Yeah, that's nice.
So, if you want to do something, you're talking about, you know, perception, right? So, these things, they can run on batteries for about 20 days, right? They collect, it's day, date, time, speed, volume, all that. Violators can be, just like a sign, except there's no display. You hang it, just hang it, and it'll run for, it's really easy to set up. I had one, I have it out in demo right now with another client. Yeah, it looks just like that, yeah, it looks just like that. It's literally, it's this thick, and, you know, that by that, it's pretty small. And I think self-contained batteries on the inside, it's fully locked up, right? You can get one of those for, you know, battery for around $1,800 of solar power, you know, which will run a year around, for $2,000. Pretty, you know, it's affordable. And then, of course, you know, like the cameras, the cameras, it's, well, we can't, it's not legal. It's not legal if you're going to collect a fee for that, or if you're going to get points or something. But legal anywhere is a warning, which people don't really recognize. The cameras, all, all right? So, you can use these for a warning, and I'll tell you, they're incredibly powerful. They're almost instantaneous compliance with these things. When someone sees a camera, I mean, the phone's going to ring a lot. But they really, they really work. And they're, you know, our, our cameras are pretty affordable. You get a base camera for around $8,000. The annual cost for the cloud, they have to be cloud-based, because it's a, it takes high-def images, it doesn't have video. Those images are fairly high resolution, so you get the, you know, plate definition. And, so it's got it in cloud-based, so basically your annual fee is around $2,000 a year for something like that.
So, can I interrupt for a second? So, I just want to understand a little bit more. So, the camera, which is a little bit out of the scope of what we're talking, but it's within the scope of speed monitoring. So, you can't, it's just, basically, you get images off the camera, and it obviously is active speed activated, and then you can send a warning to the driver. You can't send them a ticket, is that what you're saying, or?
It's, in that sense, I don't think it's legal to use, it's, the trick is with, with cameras is it's officer witness or not. So, officers present, you still, we actually have one on a tripod. So, if the officer's there, you can set it up 1,500 feet away. The camera's there, if the officer's in line of sight, he gets violation right away, he can hit the lights, pull the guy over, has techniques up there. But, the trick is, if there's, if you want to do it without an officer around, that's not legal.
Yeah, okay, that's what, that's what I was wondering.
That's the trick right now, so. But, yeah, warning-wise, all day long, it's legal anywhere. It really comes down to whether you have the, you know, you have that big of an issue, or if you can pass it through your council to say, hey, you know, it takes a, this, this year I passed before, if you look at this, this is kind of the image of that. I'll shoot that down. It uses LiDAR technology, so, I don't have two of those out there. So, it takes, what I recommend is, these cameras are standalone, they kind of work for the sign, but it's the same price as one that's a standalone. And I recommend a rear plate camera, because then there's no Big Brother. All you can see who I am or who's, you know, there's none of that. The data that comes to you is the license plate, day, date, time, speed, violation, image, everything, GPS location, just the plate, night or day. But, the difference with our stuff is that it's not like a red light running camera, or the police, where that stuff can be hot-listed, linked to, you know, Amber Alert and all, all that kind of stuff. What that is, is, it's, that's a, that's a different system. This information is yours. So, if you capture a policeman in pursuit, a fire truck, if you capture a married wife, you know, whatever, someone working on, doing something illegally or whatever, you don't, it doesn't have to go anywhere. It's yours. You can choose what you choose instead. You guys already probably have Enlets. Do you guys use Enlets right now? Enlets is, the police would know about it. It's a, most municipalities get charged about a quarter million dollars a year for this service called Enlets. So, when they're out there in the cruisers, and they hit that, that gun, and they pull the thing, they can run it through Enlets. If the services aren't paid, and now you can tell who that owner of that vehicle is. So, with ours, it's not connected to that, because you already have it. If you need to run that, then you can. When we first started the cameras, we had it set up, and the deal was, we were testing it, you know, it was in the schools. And the police said, listen, you know, we're not going to, we're not interested in this, there's nothing we're going to do. But if you get someone that is, it was a 50 mile an hour zone, I think they said, if you get someone that's 30 miles an hour, or somewhere's pretty high, and they said, just let us know, we'll decide what to do. Well, we kept getting someone, within the first two weeks, we kept getting someone going 60, same time, every day. And so, we sent it through. We never, we've been there for years. We never noticed it, never noticed the guy. Sure enough, at about 6:30 in the morning, this guy came just right around the corner, nothing even stopping, stops right around, and it was some guy that was going, had to drop off his middle school son somewhere, and his daughter at another place, and he was running from one to the other, make the time. And then he had to work on time. It's the same guy. For amazing things, but, you know, probably outside is, you know, the, what you guys are looking at now. But, I mean, there's, they're portable, you can use solar, all our stuff. We sell trailers as well, dollies that can show up here as well. You know, I don't know how much time you want to spend on it. We can get on the website, I can show you live access of, you know, your signs, or whatever. We can do the trainings a lot of time. But, you know, generally, that's, that's where we are. Rubber stuff is about the same. It's about three grand for a two-way roadway. Signs are about three grand to get you started. So, you're roughly in that, you know, budget-wise, you're roughly in that area. The, you know, there's a lot of funding out there, whether it's C-MAC for signal timing, or, you know, emissions, AAA safety, safety of the school, I had my list of, I was, if you have a, it's Walmart, Walmart has five grand. If you have a Walmart town, they have a community safety grant. It's five grand. There's been more money in this, unfortunately, it's, I have to say, I admit it's a lot of it's due to the shootings in schools. It's where a lot of this money, unfortunately, is not from the safety, cameras, you know, all that, but...
Yeah, that list would be helpful, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can get that. It's, there's a lot out there. We have, you know, we're, we're a little different in what we do. You know, I know you see, you're looking at other vendors. We make all our own stuff, hardware and software is all on, everything is in-house. It's not from somewhere else. I mean, there's components, like we're waiting, like the rest of the world, we're waiting on chips now for computer. But, I mean, there's certain things, but it's, it's pretty much minor. And what else is different about ours is, if, and I have a few, I have a couple of signs in the car as well, if you want to look at that as well, some of the rubber stuff and whatnot, and a camera as well. But, our LEDs, there's no, most signs that you see have a plastic shield over the front. Our signs are individual LEDs. The newer ones have, it is a plastic shield, but it's still individual LEDs, which is unique. It's power-saving, it's focused light. So, that's the whole intent here is that you're, it's only on when it's needed, because you don't want, they can display from 3 to 99. What you really only want it on is, you know, you have a speed limit, and then when they're violating, you know, all that. All Traffic Solutions is another great company. We bought them last year. They run as a separate company, but they're part of our real house now as well. They do a lot of messaging and stuff.
Do you guys want to see these guys?
I mean, I know what they look like.
You've, this is your, this is your fief though?
One thing I think that is really worth talking about is the rubber speed tables. You know, thinking, we have a couple of signs now that'll record data in a way that, that we can, data that's useful to the police department and to DPW. And I think a couple, a couple more signs probably wouldn't hurt, certainly wouldn't hurt. I do think it may be worthwhile to look at getting a portable rubber speed table that we can install.
Sure.
And say we, we can document, we have data that's showing an issue somewhere, we can put that out and see if it solves it, or, and doesn't lead to a bigger issue, a different issue. Sometimes, you know, with a speed table, we can solve the, we can solve a speed problem, but create a noise problem with the deceleration, acceleration, suspension noise. But I do think looking at the speed table may be worthwhile.
I have a section, I have a section in the car, which I can get out, it's solid rubber, it's made from recycled car tires, it's green, right? Essentially, right? The, what's, what people don't get from our website, which I have complained, I don't know how many years, and we're redoing the website, and I've been told we're going to fix it. It looks like there's only, it looks like a store where you can just buy that in stocks. There's actually dimensions on it. Totally not true. The way these things work is, the longer it is in the direction of travel, the higher the speed, the shorter it is. So, you see ones like a Walmart or wherever, short, 5 miles an hour, it's all you got to go, right? So, the trick with these things is to get these at or near the posted speed limit, so that you're not punishing the good drivers, and that you're only punishing the bad drivers, right? So, we can scale it to make whatever speed you want, and absolutely any width, absolutely continuous width, emission quantity if you want.
I think we'd be looking for something for like a 35 zone, and it's like bike pavement with, give or take. We'd be, you know, like one day in Chicago, we want to put in a permanent speed table, and we have to look at the drainage in the area to make sure that, okay, do it with a portable, a rubber ones, we can install them in such a way that the water can still drain down each side of the road, so.
Also, we make what's called a speed cushion. Now, one of the other issues you're going to have is far achieved being... Now, one of the other issues you're gonna have is the fire chief will be involved. And I recommend these involved early because I've seen these things delivered and the fire chief says, take it back. Sometimes the guys don't mind, you know, there's, there's hops which are short, some tables which are generally longer, have a flat top, and then there's speed cushions which are uh only six feet wide because of federal mandate of cars or such that and where emergency vehicles have custom chassis. So what happens with those is they can drive the front wheels miss, the um outer duallys miss, the inner duallys are right up on a tapered edge, keep going, so that they're not impeded at all. They're just Google, I mean, go on YouTube, Google speed cushions, you'll see, you know. And these things are great, they're great for if there's a lot of foot traffic, white traffic, things that interfere as well. Andrew?
Just a quick question on both of those, winter time, um do those get taken up for the winter generally?
We recommend, couldn't you do, they're not, I mean, depending on the street, I mean, something that big, you have a big plow, right? Big area, probably gonna tear them up. It's not the cost of it because a section, usually it's the middle sections, they're like eighty dollars, you know, it's not that. It's, it's a liability, right? If you have, you rip one out, then if you don't have a spare, put that again, you got something. But I'll tell you about half the people uh in the north country, like I said, we sell these in Canada and all, about half of them keep them in, half of them don't. New Jersey typically, in the northern, New Jersey will keep, keep them in the area, but some do, some don't. Now, we've a lot of those, lots of them in Maryland, you know, depends on where you are. We have one in Baltimore, it's been down for fourteen years, that's a huge one. It's a, I think it's fourteen or twenty-one foot in the direction of travel and it's, I think it's one forty wide. Buses, nothing emergency, buses, any pneumatic tire problem, military, whatever, any forklift, narrow tire, that would be not good.
I mean, I know there's been a lot of requests for them, I know that the councillor had asked about adding this on, I just wanted to kind of do some due diligence before we did that, but I'm just looking at the way that this agenda item was added to the uh to the committee and it's, it's seven points and the third point is identification, discussion around no contributors to speeding within the city, opportunities for public messaging around these factors, and ways to mitigate these factors in order to improve public safety. So I think that actually includes other traffic mitigation, so I don't think we need another, do you?
Yeah, I would agree, I would agree that that would be covered.
Off the speed tables?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so I was just saying that like, I wondered if we had to add it back in, but I don't think we do.
I don't think so, as long as we're talking about speed mitigation, I think.
Yeah.
My thought on the rubber style is to get one, if we can, if we can make one work in the budget, use it here, there, wherever.
Experiment.
And find that it works out well, that it takes care of the problem, then we look at taking the expense off installing permanent speed. I mean, I think it's worth mentioning that the one on Park Street by the Williston Gym, the pool there.
Yeah.
So backup put in and went through the board of public works approval process and they were, they were good with it. And I thought we'd get complaints, but I didn't get one.
No, I think that's a great idea.
It's just the rest of Park Street that is now everybody's gonna fuck it up. They go over it and then they.
Yeah, councilman, you have any addition to that?
No, he hit it right on the head, I had a same question, Salem hit it, so that was great, yeah.
Yeah, it's wide, I mean, it's rubber on rubber, you know, there's no, there's only one on in North America where you only can go to the. They just, they just literally just bolted place, right, the leg bolt in and.
Actually, you can just kill the holes back in when you move it.
Silicone, some guys do that, you know, or, you know, tar or whatever you wanna do. Uh I mean, it's a lot of holes, I mean, it's, you know, you're, the force on these things are pretty intense. So you don't, we recommend you put all the holes in, not everyone does, especially in the testing period. And you bring up a good point, a lot of times I say, listen, just buy it, buy a cushion, maybe two cushions, they're a thousand bucks for the small one, put them in the PDW lot, have the cruisers come or have the fire guys come over, you know, have everyone run over them, personal cars, ambulance. We had a mare in San Antonio, there's one, if you, if you Google San Antonio.
You'll get a fire truck.
There's a, there's a mare, there's a mare.
And the fire truck is going to.
Yep, there's a mare, San Antonio, I did that one, it was a hundred fourteen, an old county airport, it was so hot, a hundred fourteen degrees in San Antonio. And they put a mare, mare literally got on a gurney and they got it to like forty, forty-five mile an hour. Because he had the, you know, you gotta talk to your insipid residents and residents. But the thing with the rubber, the great thing about rubber, I love them, we can only sell them once, but I mean, I, I think it's perfect. But then your risk is really small because if you try and say you hate it, you can sell it to the school or give it to a school or give it to a golf course or, you know, there's almost very little way.
Yeah, I would definitely be in favor of that, I think there's been a lot of discussion more and more around those forms of mitigation tech uh technologies and I think that would be a good way of testing out, you know, permanent ones, uh which I think would appeal to both the residents and, you know, members of the council. So I think I, I certainly would be open to making that recommendation as part of this broader conversation. You know, what are thoughts about, you know, one of the biggest things with, with this topic is not necessarily whether the city needs more electric speed signs, but um where to put them. Um and so that's been part of the broader conversation, I talked to Chief Alberta, he can't be here tonight, but I guess, you know, I think we should probably try to identify, and I know you director get a lot of the complaints, so we kind of have to determine like what are some of the hotbeds, you know, where, where those should go. So I don't know if that's something you want us to speak to now or?
Yeah, I mean, the first two I would look at are Franklin Street, the one, Parson Street. Personally, I'd say East Street and Line Street are the two most dangerous streets in town. I've worked in both of them and they're, they're the worst. That would be probably four locations I would, maybe if we were to get two more signs and use them, I'd look to where Bob wanted to see him also.
Okay, yeah.
You're gonna keep going plain street.
Well, yeah, I, I think that ultimately, and I'm curious to know what the other councillors think, I mean, I think that the goal would be to kind of deploy them in a, in a, like in phases. So you, it obviously won't need them in every street, but we want to like do a strategic plan in terms of, you know, what are the, what are the places that need them the most and then, um you know, kind of start to narrow it down from there. Um and I, I agree with the places that you listed, obviously. I know that um Holyoke Street's also a big one. You know, it doesn't have to happen all at once and obviously funding is gonna be something we have to figure out, you know, whether it be so, so our free cash appropriation or looking to, you know, external grant funding sources. But um I mean, yeah, so.
And I would say two things, one, one is like getting an idea on traffic count, you know, putting these in the highest traveled areas. I think would be one thing, I think another thing is, I noticed that in Ashfield, or maybe it's still Williamsburg, I don't know, they just put one in, it's a feedback sign, so if you're going at the speed limit, it actually tells you slow down. But it's lit, and, and they have it set for a thirty, I think it's like a thirty mile an hour. About twenty feet past it is the speed sign that puts it up to forty, you know? So like putting these in places where it makes sense, where you're literally not gonna change the speed limit within the like, you know, it should be the, the posted, so you know, it's kind of, um I was thinking, that was dumb, we should not do that.
Right, yeah, yeah, it should be effective, yes, I agree.
And I would add, I would add Park Street coming into town, uh and I would add Clark Street, because that's a, Clark is a big cut through over to uh East Street and it's straight. The str, the, the streets that don't have a lot of curves.
Marking Holyoke.
Yeah, yeah, straightaways.
Pretty easy to move, I mean, you know, they're, they're, they can be AC uh battery only or solar. Now, solar just charges the battery, right? So you can have it permanent somewhere and say you have a uh hotspot or one of these other streets you're coming up, this is uh the issue for the week or whatever, there's a special event on it, you can build one for a long time, just some batteries. Seven, seven to ten days, you know, or whatever. And you mentioned work cells, we have a hitch mile, you can literally put one back to your truck.
Yeah.
Can you tell me a little bit more, I'm curious about the cloud software in terms of like how robust that is? Is it just like this, here, here are the speed limits detected by the sign or is there any sort of broader kind of interconnected type of analysis or?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, do you have, do you have internet on TV there or? If not, we can.
How do you?
With the computers.
It has Google, it has um.
Well, we could do, we could do, I mean, I can show you on there.
It's a Google Play on this.
Do you want me to look up my computer too?
I think you can do it wirelessly.
I think there's a wireless way, right?
Well, it's.
Okay, you can cast it.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's got AirPlay.
Yeah, you can cast to it.
Yeah.
I mean, I can use a hotspot, I can just use my phone.
Yeah, Chromecast, it's got.
We do have Wi-Fi, yeah.
So if you just, you can just look to the TV, you can cast or something like that. Or Owen can too, or Dave.
Do what?
Just cast to it and go to the.
So while you're setting it up, it is, the cloud is nice because it is, it gives you all the standard uh reporting, just like the traffic engineer reporting, what am I looking at here? So I don't know, I'm trying to remember how to do this.
Uh you just look on uh, oh god, what is it? Look under your Wi-Fi maybe and, and there should be something Chromecast.
That's insane, maybe from the TV and you can cast to it, if you're on the Wi-Fi.
Yep.
I know how to do it.
Or you can just get on the internet, I can try, I just go, it's a, it's a, the cloud is anywhere in the world where there's.
Yeah, yeah, let me uh, let me just, you know, let me open a different browser.
I know how to do that from like YouTube.
I know I've done it before, I'm blanking.
I know how to do it through the Chromecast.
Sorry, can I do it from there?
Like, if that's easier, I think I can.
We should watch football on this screen.
They're on actually, it's twenty minutes.
Oh, yeah.
Patriots Giants.
Yeah.
There we go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Preseason game.
There you go. Do you have a website? Because he's got it up there.
Yeah, W W W Logix on cloud.
Greg, are you good for time too?
Yeah, I'm all right, yeah. What, uh what was it again?
What was it?
W W W.
Logix on cloud.
L O G I X.
Yeah.
Oh, G I X, I'm sorry.
Dot com.
On cloud, yeah. Okay, so yeah, hopefully I can make this. M, capital M, capital G, R E, G O R Y, and then password is same thing, one, two, three.
But they're quite too fast, they haven't seen them.
Try all caps, M, Gregory.
I got a little, I got a few, he uses it.
T R E, G O R Y, and then all caps, one, two, three, I may have to, I'd never memorize that, I should. Let's see if that works, that's not working, all right, hold on, let's see, let me. We gotta back up here.
So are these meetings live streamed for like the council meetings now? Or just recorded?
Just recorded.
Oh, wow, yeah.
No, 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 this is live.
I know, he's asking about our.
Our, this recording up here.
Oh.
Yeah, and then.
They wanna change your password.
TV or something, right?
Yeah, okay, here, we need one more. So work, uh B, it's small, all letters, uh are all small letters, B, F, E. Whoa, wait a minute, go to the user ID.
Okay.
So all, all small, uh B is in Boyd, F is in Frank, E, R, R, I, N. And then go down to password, capital B, small F, E, there's, yeah, small E, small R, small R, small I, small N, and then one, two, three.
Got it.
There. Okay, this, this is an older version of the thought, but I can still, uh I can walk you through this. So this is, it's gonna be something like this, our newer version's a little fancier than this, but um. All right, so this, so anywhere in the world we have internet connection, this is what you'll get. Your map. Will have all your, you know, say it was one area, it would go, a street level have, RS means radar, radar sign. If it was a counter, it'd be TC traffic counter, camera, you know, whatever, it would be, be one of those. This, this actually has a hot link, these are not set up, these are all demos and some of our sales agents. But this gives you an idea. So when you, when you click on that, it can either be red, yellow, uh or green, green it's active, red is uh maybe there's no power uh or it's not there anymore, it's an old location, gray would be an old location, yellow would mean uh there's an alert. So we have five alerts, low speed, high speed, um if you want to report lost communication. So what these things you can actually do with, with a cloud base is, so say we have a meeting, how often do you meet for the council? Is it once a month?
Twice a month.
Twice a month, so you can actually set your signs to send you a PDF of the, all the violators and all you do is hit print, it's automatic, all set up, it's, it's one of the alerts. So this gives you a snapshot of the power, you know, the high, low, the speed, like I said, this is obviously not active yet, but just to give you an example. And you know, everything you put on there, whether it's, you know, our rubber hubs can be activated, uh cameras, whatever, would show up on, just on one map and, and anywhere in the world. Dashboard is just a. This is just a summary, like an Excel summary, so it gives you some of these here. You know, here's your serial number, your firmware, eighty-fifth percentile speed, you know, gives you, gives you a snapshot of great data.
Oh, yeah. Because the data was important, so.
Yeah, I won't, I won't link all this, but I mean, you can set uh the signs, you can set for password, there's administrator level, report, you know, tech levels, all that, that's your, uh, that's your user share or something. Uh bandage location, so, so you wanna, you wanna add a new uh, you know, a sign somewhere or whatever, you just, you just add it, put in the, put in the street location, so put it pinned wherever you want it, so it knows where it's. Every sign has a, a number on it, it's like it's fingerprint, so it knows where it's been. So under one of these signs, you'll see in a minute, it'll give the dates of all the times that sign has information. So you, you ask about the power of the software, there's, in this software, I'll show you in the recording, I don't know if I'll be able to do it with what's here, but um you can actually compare, say, the first year you got it, year one to year five, or say it was before the new Walmart came in and after, you can do comparison reports like that. Or these signs, you can put them in stealth mode, which it's, it's there collecting data, but the display's not working. Use that either before or after, you know, a lot of times they'll put it out, the first week you put it out like that, you get a lot of phone calls, you turn it on, or vice versa, so you forget and then you want to turn it off and see what happens to the speeds.
And I'm assuming you can get breakdowns like based on time of day and days of the week or something like that?
Oh, yeah, I'll show you right here. So. Your settings, we have express and schedule mode. You can, express is a quick, easy way to do it, but we have a schedule mode which literally, if it's in a school zone, you can have it come on, seven to nine, off, you know, on and off, it's, it's, you have to work on nights, weekends, wherever you want.
Oh, I mean, more than in terms of the data collection, like you can get a breakdown like over, like a graph, like average speed based on like.
Yep, yep, I'll show you that, so I can hear.
Like brush hour on Tuesdays is.
Right, your average is forty, whereas, yeah.
So that's in the reports. So, so custom report, pick a location, I don't know if anybody's had any information we're gonna find out, this got, no, it's old, but we got some in there. So say you want to do this from March first, oops. It's the date range to March, February twenty-third, so let's go. I'll just do this quick. There's, I'm not gonna get into what we can do and how we can change this in many ways. But from here, this is your time breakout, right, or what it was, I mean, at fifteen minutes was the bin that we had, so I mean, I'd be fifteen minute bin, but here, this is all the things that you can get out of it. Total vehicles, speed, speed violations, eighty-fifth percentile. Total vehicles, speed, speed violations, eighty fifth percentile, min max, so if, give you an idea, if I had snuck all. There it is.
I see, okay, so it's more of a.
Yep, and then from here, you can print out.
Oh, I see now, yep, okay.
Yep, so here's your total count, the day, date, time, uh, posted speed, a little bit, H means a high for that particular interval, um. So up here, you can, you can get a CV, CSV file, you can just download it, a PDF, print, regular, you know.
Any visual data capabilities, like graphing?
There's charting as well, yep, yep, there's, there's charting as well.
Alright, oh, there you go, yeah.
So you can do all kinds of graphing and stuff, so.
Cool.
So it's pretty powerful, I mean, people, they, they, and the thing of it is, is your time is valuable, right, I mean, you guys all have a million things to do, right? So you don't wanna, these things can work for you, and, uh, so that, so say it's five hundred, that'd be the most you'd ever pay for a sign. If you think of what kind of access, immediate access, you can get access to all your signs at once versus driving to each sign.
Downloading data.
And the thing with, it's great, but it's on a laptop, you drop the laptop, it's, it's gone, right? So.
Yep.
Is it good?
Do I remember correctly for the cloud, that if, once you go over like seven signs or something like that, it's just a flat rate, or am I remembering that correctly?
No, there's a, we have, we have up to like a seven year, you can buy seven years at a time.
Yeah.
Uh, and the only reason we, we dropped it at seven was that technology changes so fast, and by seven years, we've replaced everything, it's internal complaints, it's not updated, so. That's typically what's bad about the limit of that, but, no, we don't, we've never, uh, it's so hard because. We've thought about doing that, having one price, just add as much as you want, but the cost of data changes all the time, and storage, the issue is really not the cost of data, cause that has been going down incrementally. But it's the storage, right, so now we have, I mean, we have thousands of sites, we have to figure out a way, so now it's, it's good for so many years, and then we put it in like. A cold storage, and then there's a deep storage, and then there's an archive, so you can always have your data, it just gets harder to get to because there's just so many clients with data, and that's, that's really, that's. Even though they're not big files, you get so many that everyone has it, you just can't. Cause we're getting, we've, we've done complete states, uh, Maine DOT, Connecticut DOT, they, they, they've hundreds and hundreds of sites, they're all collecting data, and so, uh, just, it's up to.
Cool. Greg, any other thoughts, feedback, questions?
Yeah, just.
I like that ability to graph.
I have the remote, I just turned it off the TV.
Oh, did you?
I didn't know.
So you just. I just like, I just.
Um, so any final kind of feedback, I think this is the first, first vendor we really had in, I know that, uh, the director has accessed other, other vendors too. I think the next, the next step is kind of really coming up with the list and figuring out how to pay for this stuff, and obviously getting consensus.
Yeah.
Vote, so, um, Mr. President, do you have any comments? Alright, um, alright, well, Mark, thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Yeah, I appreciate you breaking out, yeah.
Appreciate it very much.
Made it all out for us, so we can understand better.
Yeah, well, like I said, uh, free training is in, and I'm all about the education, so, I mean, even if you're, probably go sell out somewhere, if you have questions, just talk.
I mean, the, the speed tables, how much did you say those were again?
You're, for a two lane roadway, I mean, the one you're talking on, that's, that's a high speed and wide, uh, that looks probably, that's probably about four grand, forty five, or something that big. But the, like the little cushions, ones, uh, type of furniture, you probably, depending, again, depending on the speed, roughly, that would start probably around a thousand dollars a piece for. That's, it's, that would be eight sections, looks, it looks like more than we think we've done, but it's eight sections.
We got it was installed there, have it, uh, somebody that can come out to, they're the shop guys.
We have an installation guy, and I, I mean, it's literally, these, these are pressed, everyone's exactly the same, um, you know who makes the best installers? I mean, your old guys can do it, cause every section only weighs, uh, between forty five and seventy pounds, it's like a piece of plate that fits, right? Put it down, drill through it, put it in, um, but striping guys, the guys that do striping. Excellent, so detailed.
We're just putting it down, we're drilling a hole, lagging it in.
That's it, it's immediate, you don't even have to shut the road, which, that's a good, so say you're doing a street, you start on one edge of the roadway, you drill it in, and, you know, as soon as it's bolted in.
Cool, great, awesome, well, thank you so much, and I've been going back and forth, and, uh, yeah.
Thanks for meeting you as well.
We'll follow up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Have a great day.
Alright, um, Greg, any final thoughts before we get to your report about?
Oh, hey guys, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Want me to pull that rubber section out, do you have any interest in that? Wait till you guys, I don't know how much longer you got, I can pull it out so you can see what it looks like.
Uh, it's up to, what if, would you guys?
I don't have a whole lot, you guys just press a few minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll, uh.
Is this thing you can bring in here?
Yeah, yeah, I can do that, if you've got a little while, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, alright, I'll bring it.
Uh, yeah, so, Mr. Director, what, what do you have for us now, we, we kinda got a pretty broad overview last time, so.
Yeah, you probably already know about most of the things I wanted to, to please talk about tonight, but, um, some very good news to report, we did receive a two hundred and eighty six thousand dollar complete streets grant to make the pedestrian safety improvements on Pollo Street. We're gonna tie that money together with some March after ninety funding for FY twenty three, and, uh, the state came out with something called Winter Recovery Assistance Program this year, our allotment of that funding was two hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars. So with those three pots of money, we're gonna be able to. Uh, we're gonna have a bid package going out, and hoping it's gonna be all by the end of this month for, for construction, well, to see it done this year, but I don't think that's realistic, given all the different supply chain problems and construction schedules that other companies are at. So we'll be able to pay Pollo Street from Cottage to just past Allen Street. And optimists are gonna be able to do that in spring, we're also going to carry, uh, a reclamation and paving of True Heart Drive off of the street, and we'll go away, both those streets are.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Very.
Yes.
There, there's some pretty tall price tags on, um, True Heart Drive, our engineers estimate it was just over two hundred thousand dollars, it's very damp soil conditions over there, the road is, it's really bad, so. I did recently a petition from the residents on, uh, True Heart Drive last week.
Yep.
Uh, however, I, we're a few steps ahead of them, and that, we've already got a design, we've had it along, uh, road's really bad, um, it is a street, but then we can make some, we can make some, uh, create service improvements on because of water mains. Not perfect, but it's not one that I'd be really looking to get replaced, really, with water discharges, and, you know, it shapes, uh, I think, uh, the road was only paved once in early eighties, one or two years ago. The patches were pulled into patches, but we're gonna try that, we're gonna, we're gonna take care of it. We also received a shared streets and spaces grant for a sidewalk snow removal track machine, this is what I put out, that application that I did, I did that.
Oh, sweet.
So I, I put that grant application together back in February, uh, didn't think we were a super strong candidate, made a map, showed a garage, it, a lot of areas in town where you could take care of with it. It's a grant. So we received, that machine there is, uh, on a state contract price with the snow, snowboard attachment, it's about sixty thousand dollars, sixty seven thousand nine hundred, of that money, the state will take in fifty thousand.
That's great, cool.
In about eighteen, and that machine.
And what's that called again?
Look, it's a, um, ASB, I believe the model's a RT forty, uh, track order, uh, forty eight inch snowboard attachment, so.
You know, our, our snow removal ordinance allows the TPW to clear people that are delinquent and charge them.
Yeah.
So you could use that, you, five seconds, so you get those delinquents, you start sending them bills.
I mean, one thing, I wanted to get out in front of the, uh, see if it was a school project, and the multi-use path that, you know, could be installed on, uh, Harst Street.
Cool. That's it. They're all the same, a foot and a half wide, three and a half feet long, and just a variety of tapers, this is actually a corner piece, what, you can see. Here's a lot.
And that's the length of the anchor, can I keep that for a little while, show my highway guys?
This, yeah.
What about the?
Over this?
Yeah. Uh, that's asking too much, it's fine, I just wanna show it to them, so they understand what I'm trying to get them involved in.
Trying to think how far away.
You take a picture of it too.
Trying to think my next trip is.
Back to the area at some point, or we do.
Yeah. Yeah, I could do it.
It's up to you.
If you want. Yeah, it's good stuff, solid river, like you said, it's all pressed, yeah, these, the, how the lags work is. You know, we recommend the seven inch, we do have a four inch, and if you have good thick pavement, you know, good ten inches of pavement or whatever, then, you know, up, up here in the north country, uh, you could probably get away with a four. Let me see if the seven. Yeah.
You leave wherever, I'll, I'll deal with it after.
Okay.
Alright, sure.
Cool.
Right side edge, you don't have to carry it back out, right?
Yeah. As young as I used to be.
Thanks, guys.
I gotta get to the gym.
Greg, it's awesome.
Thanks very much.
Thank you for your time, man, great night.
Have a good night.
Alright, uh, so you were talking about the snow removal.
Yeah, so we're working through some paperwork with the, with the state and the, uh, shared streets program, and keep that moving, so.
Great.
Probably be in front of you guys with an appropriation for the eighteen thousand, so that's a, I'm really looking forward to, or to getting a rate.
Fifty K for the state.
Looks like a cool machine, it'd be great for the city, yeah.
Plus, if you can use it for snow, we'll be able to use it around the highway department yard for different things.
You can do my driveway too.
So, yeah, I mean, I, those two things, and, uh, I'll be meeting, we do have some concerns that were brought up, but when we were emailing back and forth a little bit about, uh, Hudson and Irving and, uh.
Summer.
Greenwood Court.
Oh, Greenwood Court, yeah.
Uh, so I have a meeting scheduled out there next week, so.
Awesome.
We'll see if we can get, talk to the police department a little bit about, they're gonna get their signs out, get some data collected over there, so we can see if they're better, you know, what's going on.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I do have, um, our streetlight contractor will be in town tomorrow, or Saturday, looking at the timing of the pedestrian crossings.
Yeah, so just to share with the committee, so, um, there was an email that came from a resident about Irving Street, uh, between Everett and, I forget the other cross street, and they were asking to make it one way. Which I thought was probably a, a very tall order, but basically, there were conversations, and obviously I would defer to the experts, what we can do there, you know, in terms of, in terms of mitigation. Uh, and then there was also an email that came around about Greenwood Court, um, to slow that down, and someone else had commented about Summer Street too, um, and then, um. Some people from the council on aging, um, I have mentioned this crosswalk, and I agree with them, that like, literally, the second it starts to say cross, like it's already like.
Counting down.
Yeah, so I mean, I have to huff it across sometimes, so I can only imagine someone with, you know, any sort of mobility impairment, or kids that are lagging behind, or whatever, so.
So we're gonna do what we can with it for now.
Cool.
However, I can't, I'm not gonna devote a ton of funding to, to that at this point, cause the light is going to be replaced in the Union Street construction project.
Okay, and that's.
We'll have newer technology, so.
Yeah, and that's also good stuff to know too, I mean, if it's, you know, but if there's a way to temporarily improve it.
There, there probably is, you can probably adjust it, I'll try to look over his shoulder because, I need to see how they do that stuff.
Greg. Uh, anything else?
Uh, it's really it, as far as stuff, you know, relevant to the committee tonight, I do, we were looking at, uh, Adams and Everett, we're, I've got our engineers looking at that crosswalk, uh, the sidewalks on one side of the street. The rough turn there from Adams onto Everett.
Oh, right, yes.
Ends and crosses.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Not a, not a super simple.
Right.
Fix, we wanna get a crosswalk in there, we can add eight A ramps up both sides, if we don't wanna do it right, so, uh, these things come in, we don't ignore them, we, it's just a lot of, there's some research and data collection that has to do with it, so.
You guys are super responsive, and you wanna, you make sure that you're recognized for that, because it's, yeah.
Sometimes we can't be, oh, and one other thing I did wanna mention to you is that we are, the Connecticut River Valley was declared a, uh, for a critical, level three critical drought, maybe at this point, so. For anyone that, you know, if they're watching this meeting, we are going to be out looking to enforce a water use restriction, um, first warning will come from probably DPW water department staff, and second, the police department, so. We do need people to, uh, shut the sprinklers off, you know, be very mindful of what they're consuming for water, so.
And if anybody is watching, I mean, I know that Wilston has, is, has been brought up as using pretty.
Spoke room last week, and.
Like high level water.
There's a few businesses.
Yeah.
There is a few, I noticed, uh, those McDonald's sidewalks were soaked this morning when I went by.
Oh, there you go.
Good thing you got a good one, right?
Stand and safety, the list is growing, so we're gonna try to knock some of those calls off tomorrow.
Well, you gotta walk to the sidewalk, else it's a grudge. Right.
Um, quick question about Adams and Everett too, so I mean, are there other, you know, obviously there's some significant infrastructure changes that could be very costly, but are there. Si, is there signage, or like blind curve?
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're looking into, our engineers taking a look at it, to see what, what the best, best thing we can do there in the short term, I mean, if, uh. First, I see YCA, a crosswalk, flash pedestrian sign.
Yep.
Eighty eight ramps, and a, and a reasonable crosswalk, and some updates to the sidewalk there.
Is there access to technology where, and I think the answer's yes, where like, so you activate the crosswalk that's around a curve though, is there like a sign? Do you, can you also do one of the signs that says like, when flashing pedestrian crosswalk, is that difficult to do?
We could look at something like that for there.
You know what I'm saying, it's like fifty feet up or whatever?
Yeah, um, we do, like, the pedestrian crossing signs we put in front of Inso Pleasant Street last year have motion detection, um, so. Somebody comes out the door, they're, it seemed to be working pretty well, it can even look right when they come out the door, uh, we may be able to put something like that in there, have the sensor a little ways away, so that the cars are able to see, like, flashing around the corner. But like, I've got Dan Day in there looking at it, see what we can.
Great. Awesome. Um, great, any other questions, comments, feedback for the director? Any, uh, any news on, um, just to stand atop this on old business, um, any news on any of the bridge projects in terms of funding, or have you heard anything, or is that's kind of still?
We're working with, um, we work with Green and Peterson, GPI, the engineering firm that helps us with, uh, most of our bridge stuff, um, they have identified a couple of grant programs that may help us with the Mondeal Bridge, and are, uh, working on getting some applications in.
And then Maine and South, we're basically still holding pattern for traffic.
Yeah, looking forward to getting traffic council from the new school, and seeing, you know, what the best way to move forward is over there, so.
And then, uh, and then bug the DOT to prioritize route tab?
Yeah, I mean, one effort we're making, I mean, a lot of the things that are, are going to happen or need to happen on Route Ten are not things of the city, it's a state level, so it's not within our, um, authority to, to alter it. However, there is a water main underneath that road that is, it's, we're not only a six inch water main from West Street to just about Alphisham Hardware, um, a little bit before, and ancient clay tile sewer. So it's about, I wanna say it's about four thousand feet, we're working on getting a, uh, sculpting fee together with an engineering firm about to, so at least we have shovel ready plans right, uh, in hand, to get that, uh, water main upsized and the, uh, sewer replaced. So, uh, that's like the one thing that we can, we can do, and we're working on, uh, to, to help support Mass Thon's hopeful upcoming project.
Yep. Great, yeah, and if there's anything, I know that, uh, I copied the president on an email the other day, if there's anything the council could do from the perspective of the public safety committee to, you know, advocate, you know. Pass a resolution, whatever, to get that going, just, you know, let me know.
Yeah, there'd be a financial piece of things to carry in that sign work forward, uh, it's a long run, there's a lot of things to look at, we need to look at, you know, growth in the area, to size the sewer properly, um, and to size the water main properly. If one of the business wants to expand, that's there, it will be large fire suppression, um, it's a fairly commercial area, and we're only serviced by six inch water mains, not, so. Any, any, um, plant development, the TC top parcel that.
Yeah.
Will require larger fire suppression, we're gonna, we're gonna need to have a bigger main in there to provide that, so.
Yeah. Anything else? This is our esteemed guest, um, okay, uh, well, thank you so much, I know, like, I really feel like these, these reports make a huge difference, certainly for us, as well as the public. Uh, so, uh, uh, I think we've covered everything, um, we touched on the Maine and South thing, and I, I, I spoke with the president earlier too, I really apologize, the, uh, ordinance, uh, committee, uh, ordinance review committee stuff keeps getting away from you, so. I owe you two some materials on that, and what I'd like to do is basically give everyone some homework, so we can all basically read up on it, and come in for probably some sep- separate meeting, and just get through that in one meeting.
Yep.
So I'll send you that, we'll figure that out, um, so, uh, without any other comments, I'll take much to adjourn.
Some music.
Motion, council jury, a second for council, uh, council munier, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, no, this meeting is adjourned, it is, uh, seven, ten roughly.
Almost a press time.